We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance by petition to supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick authorizing the establishment of a government energy aggregation program that faces 100% preferably regionally sourced renewables by 2035. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Delete 298 Howard Street. Three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 2 Administration and Personnel in regards to consolidation of the Department of Public Works and Department of Engineering. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, an ordinance to grant an easement into the city of New Brunswick right away on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 49.01. We then have resolutions. Number one, approve again amendments to approve payroll, three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve request for use of city property requested by Mohammed Moss, location Easter Park picnic area and basketball courts for community festival for a day of fun and fellowship, Saturday, September 1st, 2018, rain date, Saturday, September 8th, 2018, 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Number five, approve request for use of city property requested by Merle Frank, location Jubilee Park Pavilion Baseball Field, number one, basketball court, wedding reception celebration, Saturday, September 1st, 2018, 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Six, approve amendment of resolution RF-031851, reason change September 16th to September 23rd, 2018, approve request for use of city property requested by Lodge of Promise, location Joyce Kilmer Park for the monthly Mercado Esperanza Market, made on Sunday, April 22nd, May 20th, June 17th, July 15th, August 19th, September 23rd, and October 14th, all 2018, April and October days, Porch Talk, Clobia, and Corazon Latina Festival, 10:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Number seven, approve request for use of city property requested by Artis Venus Postilin, location Joyce Kilmer Park for Mexico's Independence Day celebration, Sunday, September 16th, 2018, the rain date, Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., police edge of duty. Number eight has been pulled. Number nine, approve off-premise raffle 50/50 in New Brunswick Elks Lodge 324, 10 Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick Elks Lodge 324, December 8th, 2018. Number 10, approve agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority, or CIA, for yard waste recycling and marketing services, terms 12-month term commencing September 1st, 2018, and ending August 31st, 2019, and the authority shall have the option of extending the term for a period of two, one-year term through August 31st, 2021. Eleven, approve reward of contract with Preston Hydraulics Incorporated for two snowplows for the Department of Public Works not to exceed $9,274, Middlesex County Cooperative Purchasing Program, CK12 Middlesex. Twelve, approve amendment of resolution RF-081749, reason to pay additional $16,500 with Hubbard Associates doing business as San Marino Architects for architectural services for the design and preparation of bid documents for various library improvements, specification number 612, cashed $17 RFP not to exceed $16,500. Thirteen, approve chapter 159 budget insertion county of Middlesex for recycling enhancement grant amount $8,000. Fourteen, authorize tax collector to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. Fifteen, approve award of contracts for truck and equipment replacement parts with Jesco Incorporated not to exceed $2,500, Campbell Freightliner LLC not to exceed $5,000, Garcia Corporation not to exceed $14,500. Term is 12-month period commencing August 17th, 2018, and ending August 16th, 2019, specification number 688-18B. Sixteen, approve amendment of resolution RF-061871, reason additional $30,000 for ongoing tax appeal to 2018 for division of assessments for Pogun Lago Miranda, Duquesne's LLP for 2018 special counsel for tax appeals division of assessments from $90,000 to $120,000. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution RF-061881, change order number one with AA Berment LLC, furniture installation of concrete work for fitness stations, specification number 917-18R-A, amount $8,623.20. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Number eighteen, approve amendment of resolution RF-121755, change order number 12, REBC Credit with Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvements project, Phase 1A, specification number 892-15A, credit amount $3,118.7. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Number nineteen, approve award of contract with Mon McDonnell Group Incorporated to include the seven Mon McDonnell LLC for engineering services for 2018 water main replacements with the awarded utility, specification number 693-18RFP, not to exceed $193,200 fair and open. Twenty, approve chapter 159 budget insertion state of New Jersey Department of Agriculture, Division of Food and Nutrition for 2018 summer food service program, $243,905.23. Twenty-one, approve resolution authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into professional energy consulting services agreement with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Twenty-two, approve award of contract with ATEC Concrete Company for Well Street Parks, specification number 924-1AR, not to exceed $882,756.25. Twenty-three, authorize refund of Fred Dibowitz in the amount of $189.42 due to overpayment against Lot 067, Lot 028, 200 Eastern Avenue against border account, number 3-01-001280-00. The time for discussion in public. Any who come to order, the clerk please call the roll.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar is absent. Councilmember Sephora Ludwig here. Council President Fleming will be late.
Please be advised that the notice requirements for the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of time and place in conduct of all public meetings in the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, replaced on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely in the home news trivia. Please rise to the pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Among the signings are men and women serving in our armed forces throughout the entire world. Thank you. Chair, if you would, three seconds minutes.
Second.
Local call, please.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Report of correspondence by city clerk.
Yes. A copy of an application for freshwater wetlands, General Permit 4 and General Permit 26 submitted to the NJDEP from Bristol Myers Squibb. A notice from East Brunswick Township regarding a public hearing that will take place on September 5th, 2018 at 8:00 p.m. A notice of delivery of labor or materials from Stavola Construction Materials, Inc. A letter from Suburban Consulting Engineers, Inc. enclosing a revised final payment, number eight, recommendation to Underground Utilities, Inc. A letter from Michael Morris Associates, Inc. regarding a proposed driveway relocation by Bristol Myers Squibb. A response action outcome letter from Arcadis to Johnson &amp; Johnson regarding the Child Development Center. A copy of the second quarter 2018 flow and loading service charge from the Middlesex County Utilities Authority. A copy of amended general information notice submitted to NJDEP for Acros Chemicals, Inc. A copy of an ordinance introduced by East Brunswick Township Council on July 23rd, 2018, Ordinance 18-18, amending Chapter 228 zoning and Chapter 132 land use procedures of the township of East Brunswick. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings.
No public hearings.
All right, we have ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance by petition to supplement, we're going to hear Councilwoman Escobar will be by phone, so try to set that up, so give me a minute or two.
I'm going to put you on speakerphone, okay? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we have the ordinance on second reading. Number one, an ordinance by petition to supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick authorizing the establishment of a government energy aggregation program that faces it 100% preferably regionally sourced renewables by 2035.
Mr. Council President, before you open the public hearing, just let me have the record reflect that Councilwoman Escobar is on the telephone, seeks to participate in the meeting on issues marked absent at the roll call, but seeks to participate in this public hearing. The ordinance known as O-081801. And Councilwoman Escobar, is that you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry, Council President, go ahead.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this ordinance, please step forward, please give your name, address, we have five minutes, one time only.
Good afternoon, Council, Council and Council Vice Presidents. My name is Junior Amero with Food and Water Watch, we're at 100 Bayard Street. So we're finally here. Today, the city of New Brunswick, they've been on a path to grant some more choice to residents where they get their electricity and the peace of mind knowing their electricity will have the positive effect on our air, water, health, and safety for decades to come. New Brunswick, if this body passes the ordinance presented by registered voters this afternoon, will implement really the first type of its ordinance in New Jersey. Over 20 towns and cities in the Garden State have implemented community energy aggregation programs. Some have included low benchmarks for inclusion of renewable energy in these GEAs, but none have taken the bold, aggressive, but imperative step that New Brunswick can take today. This will include standards with benchmarks for that electricity to come from completely renewable energy sources, eventually 100% of it from energy like solar, wind, and geothermal. This body could pass one of the most aggressive renewable energy ordinances in New Jersey, and for a city of its size, perhaps, in the country. The city of New Brunswick will show the 565 municipalities in New Jersey how to fight climate change at the local level, how to break up the unfair monopolies created by utility companies that bear high costs on rate there, and how representative democracy and direct democracy can speak hand in hand. I'll be quite honest, I do not know how the council will vote this afternoon. We, at Food and Water Watch and public advocates that have spoken at the council meetings, we've tried our best to advocate our support for this ordinance, which if the public does not know, would create a competitive bidding system where the city would solicit bids from electricity providers and require that a certain percentage of that electricity come from clean energy sources. Eventually, by 2035, 100% of it, electricity must come from renewables. This is the same benchmark that scientific consensus tells us, we must achieve globally to roll back the worst effects of climate change before we fall off the tipping point that we won't be able to get back. Of course, the city of a little over 50,000 people can fight climate change on its own, but it can set the bar for other towns to take action during the age of climate change, denying the president and the congress that also does not recognize climate change. Every day that goes by, many more tons of carbon dioxide, methane, carcinogens mixed with the air that we breathe, and lead to the unacceptably high asthma rates our youth experience in New Jersey. Middlesex County is graded an F by the American Lung Association by a report in 2016. Every day of inaction that we take not fighting climate change releases even more greenhouse gases into our air, fueling climate change closer and closer to that tipping point. We can't wait until the November election, where we're confident New Brunswick voters will approve the ordinance with their votes, but we need action now. I hope the council will make the right decision and possibly save that extra child from a lifetime of respiratory illness, heart illness, or asthma, especially if your action is taken today instead of by voters all two months from now. I hope others from the public will join me now and speak in support of this ordinance before the council, and I thank the council for their consideration.
Thank you.
Sorry, do you have to state my name and address?
Yes. The [inaudible].
Okay. My name is Deborah Lemego, 100 Bayard Street, here in New Brunswick. Good afternoon, Council and Council President. My name is Deborah Lemego, and I'm a community advocate with Food and Water Watch at 100 Bayard Street. Like Deandra, the Rutgers student who spoke two weeks ago, I also knocked on doors for a few hundred New Brunswick residents in support of the 100% clean renewable energy ordinance that you're about to vote on. The response, as you know, was overwhelmingly supportive of this aggressive timeline and opportunity to have a choice when purchasing electricity. New Brunswick voters are seeing an action in fighting climate change at a federal level, and even witnessing fossil fuels company gain even more handouts and exemptions from environmental regulations. If there is one thing people in Jersey from all political identities care about, is protecting our water and air. We're done with this attack on our health and safety and environment. That's why it's so important cities like New Brunswick take action at the local level. Unique approaches like this ordinance that set benchmarks for utilities to provide clean energy that comes from wind, solar, geothermal, instead of what we're currently using, gas and oil, and coal that leaves once clean rivers and aquifers polluted for decades or centuries to come. And I'm hopeful that this council will make the right decision and vote to support this ordinance today. I think you've read that.
My name is Jennifer Kalarzic. I live at 109 Indian Avenue, across from Douglas Campus, and I have been a very long time resident. I came to school here in 1987 and made this my home. So I have to say, I am super excited that a bill like this is in front of me to vote on. I think that this city, you know, it's an exciting city, it's a dynamic city, it draws people from all around the world, and I think that, you know, we could set a true example, not just for New Jersey, but for other cities of this size, also university towns, to, you know, set us on the right course and get off the fossil fuels. I think that we definitely can do it. I know that in my neighborhood, I spoke to many folks about the prospect of this ordinance going forward, many of them signed petition, I know that it's a fact, as members of Food and Water Watch came around, I've spoken with folks. So, you know, just like Junior and Deborah told me, we do know that the effects of climate change are hitting our state in particular, right? We're low-lying along the coast, and Hurricane Sandy was devastating, and as we see more and more storms impacting us, and we, you know, figure that the Raritan River, right, is sitting right here, it's a tidal river, we've seen numerous floods in my 30 years of living here. I think that we definitely should, you know, take this opportunity, and I would really like for you to vote on this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, Vice President Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick President, editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper here, and candidate for mayor of this great city. If I may, I'd like to ask each member of the council how you plan to vote on this ordinance.
No.
You plan to vote now?
No, you can't ask right now.
Okay. Well, as you know, I'm a supporter of this, and I hope that you'll be voting yes, it's the right thing to do, and I would commend you if you do it, because it is absolutely needed for cities and towns to step up, and I would love to see New Brunswick be a leader in terms of clean air and clean water, and giving people a choice as far as where they get their electricity from. So if you vote yes, I would commend you, and I also think deep thanks and gratitude to Food and Water Watch is in order, because the folks who went out and got these signatures, many of them were volunteers, and they have done a good thing for our community by helping put us in a position to become a leader tonight, so I hope you will do that. Please vote yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim Union. I live at 306 Dogwood Drive, Hampton, New Jersey. I am on the E-board of the Central New Jersey Democratic Socialists of America, and we are a pro-environmental organization. I would like to address something that has been left out, which is the effect of global warming on the entire world. There are obviously going to be a lot of catastrophic effects of global warming right here in New Brunswick and around New Jersey. New Jersey is probably going to be like, something like the Everglades in about 50 years, but if you look at the equatorial regions, they are already feeling the effects today. In Costa Rica and other equatorial countries, the number one rising cause of death is liver failure. Why? Are they drinking themselves to death because they're so sad that the environment is going to crap? No, they are literally being boiled to death. The conditions outside during the summer for field workers in equatorial regions is akin to that of the inside of a crop pot, and they are dying of liver failure. It's the first vital organ to go when you are cooked to death alive. In the Sudan 30 years ago, it was set to be the new breadbasket of Africa and the Middle East, it was like a new Egypt. The Nile runs through the Sudan, and they were setting up agricultural systems that would have fed an entire region that is already, you know, that really needs it. Today, it's completely desertified, people are fleeing the Sudan in millions. How does this affect us? Well, ideally, we should care about it on its own terms, but if you really need a reason that affects the people of New Brunswick, there will be mass migrations over the next several decades, mass migrations, the likes of which have never been seen. We are already seeing them from Sudan, a lot of the European migrant crisis comes from regions that have been affected by global warming. We here in the United States are going to see mass migration from the people of the global south in this continent and on South America. We should obviously do our best to take care of people should they need to come to this country, but the best thing that we can do right now is prevent it from being necessary in the first place, so that that crisis never comes to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Esther Barkin, at 114 Dunham Avenue in Edison, not too far away. I'm here as a citizen to support this ordinance. You just have to listen to the news and read the paper almost every day to see what is happening around the globe. We have extreme heat, we have drought, we have excessive rainfall, our whole planet is changing, and we do not really have any time to waste. I mean, this is a dire situation. Somebody has to take action. New Brunswick is a perfect place to start. I myself have opted for clean energy in my own personal, you know, utility bill, working with students in Edison to try to make them more aware of things that we can do, but this would be a great start. We, you know, we hope it's not too late, but so I implore you as a governing body to take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Albert Moery. I live on Townes and Street 47, second ward. I've lived in the city here for some 35 years, at least. I like to say that as a member of the elder population of New Brunswick, I can speak for many of them that some days it's harder to breathe because their respiratory problems that are endemic to many of the elder population makes it even worse when you're living in an environment where there's a lot of pollution. We have so much density in the city that more and more, some days it's worse than others, and I can feel it, I think, with all the traffic, with the industry, whatever, because there's going to be much of a load, and I think anything we can do to lessen the toxic load of environmental pollution and other, would be really a boon to the population that are part of it. We especially are vulnerable to the effects of environmental pollution. I think that we have, we have to adore this council, to think of the people who live here, and there's substantial population here of elderly, and they especially will feel the effects, and they feel it now. I find that some days it's worse than others with, you know, with all the sources that we have to pollute, and I think this would be a very great step forward to lessen the toxic load that is going to really get worse, not better, unless we start taking some action. And I think this is a wonderful first step, and I implore this body to consider this and to pass this ordinance. It's one of the things that I frankly think that will make a big difference, and not just for our, for the elderly, but for all the people that are here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace Iam. I live at 32 Lincoln Avenue in Hyde Park, and I'm a librarian at Rutgers University. And I think New Brunswick is a wonderful city, not least because it's home to one of the greatest universities in the United States by any measure, and that's Rutgers. And I think we're giving our students a wonderful education, but we owe them more than that. We owe them a future, and I worry that they don't have a future. I worry that their future's going to be fighting for clean air and clean water. So I hope you'll take this opportunity to think about the future of these 50,000-plus students that we educate in this wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mayor Payton for taking the initiative to put such an aggressive ordinance before us, and thank our city attorney, Mr. Shann, for doing all the research, and I think we're going to step forward in our city.
Motion?
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Where?
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Okay, we have. Sheriff Clark, does Rebecca want to stay up?
Rebecca, would you like to vote on the remaining ordinance?
Two.
Absolutely.
Okay. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Delete 298 Howard Street. Anyone from the public wish to comment on that ordinance? Egan?
Who's your ordinance?
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Where?
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. And number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 2 Administration and Personnel in regards consolidation of Department of Public Works and Department of Engineering. Anyone from the public wish, yes?
I do want to, maybe you know, or maybe you could refer the question to your administrator, has there been any discussion of creating an additional department now that these two are being merged? As you may know, under the Flotter Act, I believe towns are capped at 10 departments. Is there any potential new department in the works?
Not very. Yep. Nothing eminent, but Mr. Cradville is right. The merging of these two departments does create the potential for creating a 10th department should you and the mayor so decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Egan?
Move your ordinance.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to grant appeasement into the City of New Brunswick's right of way on Duke Street, Lot 62, Lot 29, Point 01.
Move your ordinance sitting down to time of the 5th. Public hearing, same date, the end of October.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have items for discussion by the council. Just like to thank those people that we saw during National Night Out on the first Tuesday of August. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for the generous food, things like that. Anybody else? Good evening. Everybody else on the resolutions?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have items for discussion by the council. Just like to thank those people that we saw during National Night Out on the first Tuesday of August. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for the generous food, things like that. Anybody else? Good evening. Okay, we'll go to the public portion of the meeting. If you have anything for the public, please step to the microphone. Again, give your name. You have five minutes on time, please.
Danielle Moore, 333 Somerset Street. Okay, first I'd like to start off with Lee Avenue due to where the traffic meeting we had on the second, due to where the roads have been redone on Lee Avenue, but then there was a holdup with the city trying to redo the other side, but what is to be done due to where the speed bumps were supposed to be put down?
The speed bumps supposed to be put down? Mr. Glaney?
Yeah, please, Council Vice President, Councilmembers. Chris Dell was the paver for the public service work that was just done. They just completed the paving about a week ago. So we have it on our schedule to install these. I just don't know the exact date. I can check the public works superintendent, but the intention is to install the speed bumps. There was a question that we may be able to resurface the other half of Lee Avenue, which is not going to be the case this summer. So we will, I hope to see within the next two weeks that we should have the speed bumps installed.
Once again, that's not what was said on at the traffic meeting. That was where you said, due to where the holdup with speed bumps, which were supposed to be done immediately, you said within one week that the other side of the road would be repaved and then put down the speed bumps. And now you're saying have to wait another two weeks added on for the speed bumps? That's not what you said two weeks ago at the traffic meeting.
Please, the council, at the traffic meeting, we discussed the possibility of being able to do the other side of Lee Avenue as part of the DPW's annual resurfacing program. We deemed that we had other streets in worse condition, so we're going to push off Lee until a year or so later, but the speed bumps will occur quickly. I can't, if, 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 the mention was that hopefully within a week, but things come up. We had a terrible water break last Friday, of course, that affected Livingston Avenue that diverted our forces. So there are things that unfortunately come up that sometimes have to take priority. So the speed bumps are on the list. They will be installed as quick as we can, but I can't give you an exact date. We also had numerous days of extreme rain, which also postponed other activities that we were doing. So there's a series of legitimate items that come up that sometimes get in the way of this, but we, they're on the list and they will be installed.
Okay, the two things, and the speed bumps are coming as soon as we can. We're not putting it off for any reason.
That's correct.
And second of all, areas where they only worked on one half of the side of the street, public service, we've been looking into even paying the other side where it's possible.
That is correct. We have developed a list, which we forwarded to the administration. We have a list of streets that were done, that we're going to take advantage of and do the other, the other half of the streets.
Right.
I don't have the list in front of me, I don't recall, but it's certainly a matter of record.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And then also to mention, due to where, I hope you have inspectors going through the area with PSE and D doing their roadwork, due to where, yes, also with those, some of these machines where how they're damaging people's property and then how they're trying to put it on the homeowner's expense, due to where, okay, there, there's a curb was cracked and due to where with the machines coming by now where you're still saying that at the traffic meeting, due to where they're saying that the homeowner is responsible for the damage that they just did with the roads?
I don't know, Mr. Glaney, curbs are making a possibility of homeowners?
The, in the maintenance code, the curbs and sidewalks are the maintenance of the homeowner. Specific, and I explained to Ms. Moore in the traffic commission meeting, we have to look at each one of these complaints on a one-by-one basis. There was a claim for a property owner to live at Livingston Avenue. They claimed that their curbs were damaged. We went back on Google Earth and in the street view and we actually saw the curbs missing back as 2015. Specific to the photograph that she's holding, I believe it's on Fulton, that we determined that it was the fault of the paver and they have to reinstall those curbs, specifically that person.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm glad you made a lot of work.
And you didn't have to, but, but, thank you. I'm glad you looked into that and let us know if you did that. Picture of before and after, isn't it, because I know that was the damage to be done. Also, the next thing, okay, about the raise, maybe $15 for crossing guards, due to where I know you will need more crossing guards once you open Paul Robinson School next month?
Support event.
Yeah, maybe there's a board event, basically get some money, kind of, yes, so they're, they're looking into that. And as I said before, I would hope that they can get there as possible. If they can't, they can't, but there's only so much to go around. There are crossing guards that used to be at Ropeson that did go elsewhere. Also, so some of them are coming back and hopefully the, I think the, anything on the police end? Captain Miller with crossing guards?
You know, see a push against that, you know, get all the spots filled, they give them a raise, you know, leave a good word about that.
Because, yes, due to where, like I said, I know three of the best that you have for a while, one retired, two are out on medical, and, like I said, due to where, I hope you will have enough crossing guards to support Paul Robinson School. So hopefully you will raise it up to $15 to get more people to come out with a job. Then also, I'd like to thank the city and the New Brunswick Fire Department. I did see they found a new way to cool our children off with the fire trucks, sprinkle them in, wetting them in certain areas. I know you couldn't do the fire hydrant, but, yes, it was lovely how they came up with the idea, keeping the kids cool, keep them away from swimming in the Radleton River. I will thank you for the city and the fire department for doing that. Then also, is Sanford Street county or city?
Sanford Street.
It's Sanford Street, the city.
City, right, city.
Correct, Sanford Street.
Well, okay, hopefully we can look into this, due to where, I'm asking for no turn on red on Sanford Street on the side of the church, due to where, I, I was just, I'll give you a picture.
Sanford, New York City?
Yes. And, like I said, Sanford Street by where the church is on the corner there, due to where in a blind zone, a person who's crossing the walkway and you have one car here and then how the other car comes on the other side to make the, to right turn. I've seen too many close calls with this happening, so hopefully the city can look into it, making no turn on red on, on, on this corner.
I can say, certainly we.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying immediately, I'm just saying, please do look into it. Like I said, how the cars, the blind zone, if you're passing in front of this car, by the time you're getting to this car and you don't see this one turning, creeping up there. So please, I hope you do look into.
Can I, can I suggest, have you presented that to the traffic commission for their thoughts?
No, that was, that was just today. I did, did, did those pictures today.
I recommend that if you have the chance to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I know, well, Sedan Street is county, but I know they were bringing it up at the traffic meeting, also, if the, which I will present it, try to present it to the county tomorrow, about maybe putting in a new light system here or making no left turns while you're on coming from Sedan or coming from Lewis, due to where this is causing major creation, problems there and is also making it dangerous for the pedestrians also crossing there, the way, the way this is. I will present to the county, I have over 50 to 100 pictures to show how I hope the city also will speak up to the county about making this a safer spot.
I mean, this gets my thought coming down from Lewis and Sedan, not making a left-hand turn on.
Either way, where you're coming, due to where either side of it, where you sit there and you're blocking the road.
On, on French Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
French Street.
French Street, yeah. So either way, you're coming on Sedan or from Lewis, where you're trying to make a left turn and, like I said, it's creating problems even for the pedestrians crossing the street there. Like I said, I will donate the pictures. I have over 100 pictures to, to the county.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Carlos Ramirez, reporter for New Brunswick today. Can somebody tell me whether or not Public Works has walkie-talkies or videos?
Public Works?
Yes.
I would suggest they do.
Did you?
Sorry, no.
Why are they driving and talking on the phone with them?
No, no, they are, they shouldn't be, so we'll tell Mr. Lockton and tell him.
All right, because I got multiple pictures of them doing it and I see sometimes they roll right in front of cops and they just wave at each other.
And feel free to give us the pictures. We'll make it known to Public Works as everybody who works for the city should be obeying all the rules and regulations of the laws.
All right. Can somebody tell me if there are any plans to fix the sidewalk cracks on Thousand Street that's between French and Railroad?
House in between French and Railroad?
Yes.
I'm not sure. That's out on this street. Definitely look into it if it's not. So, okay, please look at it.
There's gravel there and there is concrete that are now that goes through the sidewalk. It's bad.
And if this would be under a bridge or by homeowners?
It's on the street, it's on the street, right on the sidewalks, right, like in the middle of the street.
In the middle of the street?
Yeah, on the side.
On the sidewalks or not in front of houses?
Um, no, that main area is not just, it's like a small back-in space there.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was told by Project Brown that there's plans to re-modify the park on French and Andy Street. Can somebody confirm that?
French and Andy, two, two plans to do what?
To make changes on there. I was told that the mayor had approved already a budget for it.
I think we're doing some restoration to the park as it currently is and then there's going to be some design work to possibly reconfigure that park in future.
Are there any plans to activate policies there? Because we recently did an inquiry with people that live in the zone and they told us that the garbage is becoming a big problem, especially with the homeless people and people who spend there to get jobs. And we have people who say they've been culled stuff, sexually harassed and touched.
I know, I'm a police safety issue and I would trust the police department is listening to what you have to say. I know we have somebody from, I think, maybe you'd like to hear from the public that works that area and clean it up every day.
All right, yes. I live in the area and it's always the same track. The only place where I've seen that parking and doorings are starting to clean is on French and Sedan. That's the only area I've ever seen it cleaned, except from going towards Andy Street, you know, Jersey or on French, there's no cleaning there.
Okay.
And also, is there a way that, I'm not sure if this falls for under Amtrak or the traffic department, but is there a way to get the parking signs underneath the under pad of Sedan and Railroad? I know that Andy has it, but drivers who.
Well, I've used to remember there are signs there that says no parking at Arrow.
They are not.
They are, as well as morning.
Okay, underneath the tracks.
Well, I mean, there's one that's before the tracks and there's one that's after that.
The difference is that.
So we can look and see.
Andy Street pass signs are right next to, under the tracks. The difference is that drivers don't see those. They see signs are marking where it's the front of houses and buildings, but not under the track. There are no roads, drivers pointing there.
Okay.
So drivers are parking there. was a holdup with the city trying to redo the other side. But what is to be done due to where the speed bumps were supposed to be put down?
The speed bumps supposed to be put down. Mr. Glanty?
Please, the council, council vice president, council members. Chris Dell was the paver for the public servicing work that was just done. They just completed the paving about a week ago. So, we have it on our schedule to install these. I just don't know the exact date. I can check the public works superintendent. But the intention is to install the speed bumps. There was a question that we may be able to resurface the other half of Lee Avenue, which is not going to be the case this summer. So, we will, I hope to see within the next two weeks that we should have the speed bumps installed.
Once again, that's not what was said on, at the traffic meeting. That was where you said, due to where the holdup with speed bumps, which was supposed to be done immediately, you said within one week that the other side of the road would be repaved and then put down the speed bumps. And now you're saying have to wait another two weeks added on for the speed bumps? That's not what you said two weeks ago at the traffic meeting.
Please, the council, at the traffic meeting, we discussed the possibility of being able to do the other side of Lee Avenue as part of the DPW's annual resurfacing program. We deemed that we had other streets in worse condition. So, we're going to push off Lee until a year or so later, but the speed bumps will occur quickly. I can't, the mention was that hopefully within a week. But things come up. We had a terrible water break last Friday, of course, that affected Woodley's Nav. That diverted our forces. So, there are things that unfortunately come up that sometimes have to take priority. So, the speed bumps are on the list. They will be installed as quick as we can. But I can't give you an exact date. But we also had numerous days of extreme rain, which also postponed other activities that we were doing. So, there's a series of legitimate items that come up that sometimes get in the way of this. But they are on the list and they will be installed.
And the two things, and the speed bumps are coming. We can't, we're not putting it off for any reason.
That's correct.
And second of all, areas where they only worked on one half of the side of the street, public service, we've been looking into, you may or may not meet the other side wherever is possible.
That is correct. We have developed a list, which we've forwarded to the administration. We have a list of streets that were done, that we're going to take advantage of and do the other, the other half of the streets. So, I don't count the listeners from me, I don't recall, but it's certainly a matter of record.
Thank you. Sorry.
And then also to mention, due to where, I hope you have inspectors going through the area with PSENG doing their roadwork, due to where, yes, also with some of these machines where how they're damaging people's property and then how they're trying to put it on the homeowner's expense, due to where, okay, there's a curb was cracked. And due to where with the machines coming by now, where you're still saying that, at the traffic meeting, due to where they're saying that the homeowner is responsible for the damage that they did with the roads?
I don't know. Mr. Glanty, curbs are a major liability for homeowners?
In the maintenance code, the curbs and sidewalks are the maintenance of the homeowner. Specific, as I explained to Ms. Moore in the Traffic Commission meeting, we have to look at each one of these complaints on a one-by-one basis. There was a claim for a property on Woodley's Nav. They claimed that their curbs were damaged. We went back on Google Earth and in the street view, and we actually saw the curbs missing back as 2015. Specific to the photograph that she's holding, I believe it's on Fulton, that we determined that it was the fault of the paver and they have to reinstall those curbs, specifically that person.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. I'm glad you looked into that. And like I said, I did that picture before and after, isn't it needed? Because I know that was the damage to be done. Also, the next thing, okay, about the raise, maybe $15 for crossing guards, due to where I know you will need more crossing guards once you open Paul Robinson's school next month?
Support event?
Yeah, maybe the support event, basically get some money. Yeah, so they're looking into that. And as I said before, I would hope that they can get there as possible. If they can't, they can't. But there's only so much to go around. There are crossing guards that used to be at Ropeson that did go elsewhere. So, some of them are coming back. And hopefully, I think, anything on the police side, Captain Miller, with crossing guards?
You know, you push against that, you know, get all the sponsors, they get a raise, you know, they get a support event about that.
Because, yes, due to where, like I said, I know three of the best that you have for a while, one retired, two are out on medical. And like I said, due to where, I hope you will have enough crossing guards to support Paul Robinson's school. So, hopefully, you will raise it up to $15 to get more people to come out for the job. Then also, I'd like to thank the city and the New Brunswick Fire Department. I did see they found a new way to cool our children off with the fire trucks sprinkling them and waiting them in certain areas. I know you couldn't do the fire hydrant, but yes, it was lovely how they came up with the idea, keeping the kids cool, keep them away from swimming in the Radleton River. I will thank you for the city and the fire department for doing that. Then also, is Sanford Street county or city?
Sanford Street.
It's Sanford Street, the city.
City, right, city.
Well, okay, hopefully, we can look into this, due to where I'm asking for no turn on red on Sanford Street on the side of the church, due to where, I will show, I'll give you the pictures.
Sanford, I think so.
Yes. And like I said, Sanford Street by where the church is on the corner there, due to where in a blind zone, a person who's crossing the walkway, and you have one car here, and then how the other car comes on the other side to make the, to right turn. I've seen too many close calls with this happening. So, hopefully, the city can look into it, making no turn on red on this corner.
Certainly.
I'm not saying immediately. I'm just saying, please do look into it. Like I said, how the cars, the blind zone, if you're passing in front of this car, by the time you're getting to this car and you don't see this one turning, creeping up there. So, please, I hope you do look into...
Can I suggest, have you presented that to the Traffic Commission for their thoughts?
No, that was just today. I did go a bit today.
I recommend that if you have the chance to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I know, well, Sedan Street is county, but I know they were bringing it up at the traffic meeting. Also, if the, which I will present it, try to present it to the county tomorrow, about maybe putting in a new light system here or making no left turns while you're on, coming from Sedan or coming from Lewis, due to where this causing major creation problems there, is also making it dangerous for the pedestrians also crossing there, the way, the way this is. I will present to the county. I have over 50 to 100 pictures to show how I hope the city also will speak up to the county about making this a safer spot.
Let me just get to my thought, coming down from Lewis and Sedan, not making a left-hand turn on...
Either way, where you're coming, due to where either side of it, where you sit there, you're blocking the road.
On French Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. French Street. Yeah, so either way, you're coming on Sedan or from Lewis, where you're trying to make a left turn. And like I said, it's creating problems even for the pedestrians crossing the street there. Like I said, I will donate the pictures. I have over 100 pictures to the, for the county.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Carlos Ramirez, you're for New Brunswick today. Can somebody tell me whether or not Public Works has walkie-talkies or videos?
Public Works?
Yes.
I would suggest they do.
Do you?
Sorry, no.
Why are they driving and talking on the phone with them?
No, no, they aren't. They shouldn't be. So, we'll tell Mr. Lockton and Doctor.
All right, because I got multiple pictures of them doing it. And I see sometimes they roll right in front of cops and they just wave at each other.
Yeah, feel free to give us the pictures. We'll make it known to Public Works, as everybody who works for the city should be obeying all the rules and regulations of the laws.
All right. Can somebody tell me if there are any plans to fix the sidewalk cracks on Thousand Street that's between French and Railroad?
Thousand between French and Railroad?
Yes.
I'm not sure. That's not on this street. Definitely look into it if it's not. So, feel free to take a look.
There's gravel there and there's concrete that are now leveling the sidewalk. It's bad.
And if this would be under a bridge or by owner's yard?
It's on the street, right on the sidewalks, right like in the middle of the street.
In the middle of the street?
Yeah, on the side.
On the sidewalks or not in front of houses?
Um, no, that main area is not just, it's like a small back-end space there.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was told by Freya Cosbrans that there's plans to re-modify the park on French and Handy Street. Can somebody confirm that?
French and Handy, two, are plans to do what?
To make changes on there. I was told that the mayor had approved already a budget for it.
I think we're doing some restoration to the park as it currently is. And then there's going to be some design work to possibly reconfigure that park in future.
Are there any plans to add new policies there? Because we recently did an inquiry with people that live in the zone, and they told us that the garbage is becoming a big problem, especially with the homeless people and people who spend there to get jobs. And we have people who say they're being called stuff, sexually harassed, and touched.
I don't know. I hope that's a police safety issue. And I would trust the police department is listening to what you have to say. I know we have somebody from, I think, my district, Clean Streets or Public that works that area to clean it up every day.
All right, because I live in the area and it's always the same track. The only place where I've seen the parking and doorings are started to clean is on French and Sedan. That's the only area I've ever seen it cleaned, except from going towards Handy Street in Jersey or in French. There's no clean there.
Okay.
And also, is there a way that, I'm not sure if this falls for under Amtrak or the traffic department, but is there a way to get the parking signs underneath the under pad of Sedan and Railroad? I know that Handy has it, but drivers who...
Well, that's usually, there are signs there that says no parking, an arrow.
They are not. They are...
There are. There's a little warning.
Okay, underneath the tracks.
Well, underneath, there's one that's before the tracks, and there's one that's after that.
The difference is that...
So, we can look and see that.
Yes. Handy Street pass signs are right next to, under the tracks. The difference is that drivers don't see those. They see signs are marking where it's in front of houses and buildings, but not under the track. There are no roads, drivers pointing there.
Okay.
So, drivers are parking there and getting citations. And I find it very interesting that when church members, that there's a church nearby, members from the council department park there, they never get citations. Customs roll by there daily, like every five minutes, and nobody gives citations to them. One is, well, when it's customers or residents, they do get citations. Is there a reason why?
I don't know if that would be the kind, but we'll look into it.
Why isn't the police give citations? Can Captain Miller make a comment on that?
I don't know that myself, but we'll certainly look into it.
Can you ask Captain Miller, why is the police just rolling by and not giving citations?
No.
But they could come back at night and get it.
No.
All right. All right, that's it for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Egan?
Move your ordinance, Mr. Jen.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes. Thank you all.